For the August 6, 2020 meeting, the Cold Spring zoning board appeals. We are going to do approval of minutes first. And then we are going to continue the public hearing for 21 Parsonage Street. At that point, I am going to sign off and Donald will take over the meeting. When that meeting, that portion of the meeting is done, we will take a break. Donald's going to let me know that we're ready to come back on for 53 Parrot Street, which is another public hearing. And I'm going to contact Karen Parks and Maria Riccapido about that. And then also contact the applicant for 11 Benedict Road, which is a workshop. If it turns out that we don't have enough time and 21 Parsonage goes really late, then what we'll do is open the hearing for 53 Parrot. And then we'll adjourn it until our next meeting so that we don't have to renotice that. And we'll just keep the public hearing open. I know that it looks like there's a desire to finish or to have a vote for Parsonage Street tonight. So that would be great. And we'll
It's not going to be a vote tonight. There will be a, there will be a, hopefully we'll close the public hearing. That's the goal.
Okay, so you're not going to vote tonight?
Not going to be discussion, not going to be a vote. We'll just see, wrap up whatever we have to from the applicant. And
Okay. Well, however you want to do, that's fine. And then we'll pick up when you're done. So I'm Aaron Wolf. I'm the Chair of the Board. We've also got Donald McDonald. He's going to be the Acting Chair for the 21 Parsonage Public Hearing. Other Board members on the call, Eric Woodruff, Buzzy, and John Martin. We're all village residents. We're unpaid volunteers appointed by the Board of Trustees. And we also have the Village Attorney, John First, on the call today for the 21 Parsonage Hearing. And Michael Mel, our videographer and Board Secretary is also on the call running the meeting. So with all that said, let's jump into the minutes for review. These are the minutes for our 716 meeting, which is the last last meeting we had. I did just send these out to everybody if you didn't already have them from the website.
I got a couple of comments on them.
Okay, go ahead.
When you, in the beginning, when you're talking about commenting on the contentious discussion, you also, we were beaten about the head for not meeting as quickly as we might have in, with the COVID. And I think that, I kind of reject that. And I think that you mentioned that, that we had met at our first, you know, allowable to date that fit in our, in the way, when we do our meetings. So I think that that should be in the, on the record. It was certainly on the record in terms of the criticism of us. So I think that it should be in the minutes. By saying that we had, we had met at our first available meeting day after the COVID, COVID was lifted and not the whole Zoom meeting.
Okay.
If that's added, I feel like, Arian, when you were explaining that, you mentioned maybe some regulations that, or the guidance from the governor about, I think we should put it in context of what our, what our requirements were and that we met them, which is my recollection of the way that you presented that statement.
Okay, so I would say something like, Aaron Wolf explained in response to criticism from the public during the hearing that the ZBA met at the first possible date based on suspension of in-person public hearings because of the COVID pandemic. And on the necessity of re-notifying the public about the hearing because the meeting was held on Zoom.
Yeah, I agree with both statements by Donald and Laura. You know, we mentioned it and we support it with, with whatever the requirements were from the state of New York.
All right, I'm just trying this down. All right, so Aaron Wolf explained in response to criticism from the public during the hearing that the board met at the first possible date based on the suspension of public, of in-person public hearings because of the COVID pandemic and the necessity of re-notifying the public because the meeting location had changed to a video conference. Does that cover that for everybody?
That sounds fine to me. I just don't know the specifics of what the New York guidelines were on recommencing public hearings.
I can, I can add in the
I don't think we have to get into, into the actual technical realities of it. I think that we, we made a damn good, good faith effort to meet as quickly as we could after the, the, the the governor or our village board said that we could start holding Zoom meetings. And so that's what we did. We weren't delaying people. We weren't, you know, slow walking anything. We were doing our job, which was what we were accused of not doing. So.
Any other comments about that part of the minutes?
I have a second comment on, under public hearings for two Locust Ridge. It should say, the application is for, and then knock out an application for. So read in, the application is for a side yard setback replacement of a place.
Setback variance, okay.
That was my only comment to rest with.
I had one comment, the second to last bullet point on two Locust Ridge. If my memory is correct, the six-foot fence was on the other side of the yard, not right behind the shed. Because they had a, they had a legal variance for that fence because there used to be a business on the other side of.
Yeah, there was a six-foot high fence granted for the side that, that joins what used to be the Montessori school, Miss Connie's place. In other words, to the south. But the north, by my recollection is that the north, I know the north side where the shed was being placed, the north side adjoins residential, residentially zoned land. And that was not approved for a six-foot high fence. In my recollection, it was only the side on
Yeah, and I, I don't think they have a six-foot fence there. So maybe we should just remove that point since the bullet right above it says, when it indicates the effect of the fencing, which is the limited visibility. Eric, if you're talking, I can't hear you.
Who?
Eric. It's like he was trying to say something, but he's not coming through.
He's not muted.
Maybe he's muted on his computer.
All right, he's going to rejoin us, it looks like. Is it okay with everybody if I remove that bullet point about the six-foot fence?
My, my name.
I wasn't at the 716 meeting, so I'm not going to say, I don't know, I don't know anything about that information. Or I did know what Donald mentioned.
I'm looking back through the materials and she, she has a green line going around the whole backyard that says approved wood fence. But it doesn't say the height. So to me, that makes it sound like it had a six-foot fence, but but I can't tell. Seems like it's not critical to have that in the minutes and it's better to take it out than have it listed incorrectly.
Eric, if you want to, we still can't hear you, but if you want to type something in the chat.
I have to say, in the photos, the fence looks the same all around the backyard. Looks like it's the same height all throughout the backyard.
Well, that was a long time ago, so maybe we approved the six-foot high fence all the way around.
Why don't we just remove that? I don't think it's, it's crucial to our decision anyway, so. Eric, thumbs up? Thumbs down? Okay, thanks. All right, so I'm taking that out. Anything else on these minutes? All right, could I have a motion to approve these as amended then, please?
A motion to
Pro the minutes as amended.
A second.
Oh, in favor of approving the minutes as amended, I
Aye.
And I think we've lost Eric again.
I'm out, I'm out of that. You know that, Arian.
Yeah.
Eric should be back in a second.
Okay, so at this point, I will drop off the meeting and Donald, you can proceed with 21 Parsonage. And please let me know when you're ready to, for me to rejoin and we'll pick up with 53 Parrot.
Okay.
Okay, thanks everyone. Is my audio working now?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, let's see, I'm having trouble seeing everybody. Okay, I see a lot of people. Okay, all right. So my name's Donald McDonald. I'm the Acting Chair for this continued public hearing, actually number four, for 21 Parsonage Street, the obligation of Sam Bro of Garrison, New York, to permit construction of a single-family dwelling on a substandard lot. We had a initial public hearing on this matter on December 19th, 2019. Then the second on February 6th, 2020. The third on February 20th, 2020. And the fourth is tonight. I think that, in my mind, I think that we, the goal should be to close the public hearing. I can tell here, whatever, and clean up any issues we have. Here, whatever, anybody else from the public or the applicant wants to say about the matter. The Board can ask some more questions if it pleases. And, and then I would move to, to close the hearing. We have 62 days from close to make a decision. And I, my, living in this COVID world, I think since we cannot meet in person at this point, there's a lot of material that has been submitted. And my goal would be to be sure that each Board member had copies of the submitted material that they could review. And then at our next meeting, I think it would be two weeks, two weeks hence, we could begin discussion on the matter. So from my, my list of issues to clean up tonight or make sure that we, we, we deal with, Sam Bro had, had reached out to me and he wanted to be sure that certain, certain items were in the record. And I checked the original folder and they are in there, but just to be doubly sure, Sam, I'm saying, we're saying that we have your, to date, we have concentrated on wave 21 Parsonage is more typical and, and you, than unique in lot size, front yard setback, et cetera. And it goes through how you went through the, the, the village map and cataloged all, all the different lots that are, that are your size or maybe a little bit bigger. And you make account of them and you give us a list of them. And you submitted this at the, at the last hearing and it is certainly in the record. So I would not be worried about that. The next thing is that we got a number of letters since our last hearing. Of course, our last hearing was before the COVID hit and then the COVID hit. And this is the first time that we could pull off a public hearing and also do the, the required noticing, which is laborious, mailing out and, you know, 10 days hence and all that and coordinate with the papers. So it was really the first time that we could make this happen. So I have a number of letters, which I will read from the public into the record. And, and that would, that would end the cleanups that I have. And then we could get to anything that the applicant wants to talk about. And we could get to the public, any board questions and then the public. I have a letter from Bernard Bunny, B U N Y E. And I might have read, now this is February 19th, so this is, oh, that would be the day before. But we read this one, I know already, on the 20th. Yeah, that's already done. Okay. The next one we have is March 2nd. March 2nd to the Cold Spring Zoning Board. It's from Morgan Rich, 34 Pine Street. Dear zoning board, I am writing regarding the proposed plan for building on the empty lot that is on Parsonage Street. I believe the address is 27 Parsonage Street. Well, he's, it's 21. We know it's 21. It abuts Thomas Huger's property as well as my backyard and our neighbor Judy's property. The property has, has sat vacant so, for so long because it is too small for a residence, requiring too many variances. The village area of Cold Spring contains houses which are already fairly close together. That is how it has been historically. But my wife and I feel that to allow so many variances for an additional dwelling on such a small lot will be a detriment certainly to its neighbors and the abutting lots. But it will also, would be a general detriment to the town planning. We purchased our lot a little over six, a little over six years ago, believing that the lot would remain empty. We would sigh, we would prefer it remain that way. It's unfortunate that the current owners purchased the lot with the hopes of building on the lot. And I have, am empathetic to their situation. But we are against anyone's building either a temporary or permanent residence at that address on the undersized lot. I imagine the difficulty in attaining so many variances would have been known upfront. We feel it is just too much to ask to build in such a small lot in such close proximity to the neighborhood. Sincerely, Morgan Rich, received building in Cold Spring, March 5th. Then we have a, it's an email and, and I know that, and it was it's from the mayor of Cold Spring. And it was triggered because they, the, the, the owners of both properties, 21 and the next door, had reached out to the mayor asking if the village could comment on the status, the legal status of both lots. And I know that you've received these, but I want to read it in the record. Hello, Tom and Sarah. I hope this email finds you and yours well. I read your letter and have shared it with the Board of Trustees. The question seems to be, quote, are the lots illegal, unquote? The Village Board of Trustees need to rely on our attorneys for this answer. The short answer is yes. Both John First, Village Attorney, and Victoria Polidaro, second opinion requested for this issue, agree that the lots are illegal. I would seek advice from your attorney on how to proceed and what this actually means for your lots. We have been advised that the Village Board of Trustees has no jurisdiction to make a determination on the legality of the lots. And unfortunately, nor does it have the ability to resolve your issue. Thus, the Village Board of Trustees has no comment, further comment on the issue. Best regards, Dave Morandi, Marer, Village of Cold Spring. That's dated May 14th. And then the last is August 2nd. A letter to the Village Cold Spring Zoning Board of Appeals from Alexander Galloway, 35 Pine Street. Dear Board, while I cannot attend the August 6 ZBA meeting, I wish, I'm writing to express my concern about 21 Parsonage Street. I live around the corner at 35 Pine Street, which is about 100 feet from the property in question. As I understand it, the applicant at 21 Harston Street is requesting no less than seven exceptions to the village code. Some of the variances are small, but some of them would cut the building requirements by more than half. By half or more. This is an unreasonable request that would negatively influence the neighborhood. I hope you will decline the request. Sincerely, Alexander R. Galloway. Okay, that completes the cleanup that I had. So now, Sam Bro, Bro, Sam?
Yeah, can you hear me?
There's Sam. Okay, Sam. So what do you have for us tonight? Any more comment, any more, you know? Yeah, you want to, your, it's your show at this point.
All right, well, I'll keep it short since I've had plenty of show so far. I think we're coming towards the end, so I just wanted to sort of wrap it up.
Okay.
From my perspective. At this point, my team and I have said everything of substance that can be said.
Right.
Or should be said. So I just wanted to make a short final statement. First off, thank you to the zoning board for your time and energy in overseeing my hearings for the past two years. This process hasn't been easy for any of us and I appreciate you for your engaged participation. I want to talk briefly about precedent, since that has been a topic we've come back to constantly in my hearings. First of all, the village attorney has stated that you cannot base your decision on precedent, but that it can be part of your thought process when you ultimately weigh the five factors of my variances. Despite the fact that I don't really know what that means, let's go with it. If you're going to let precedent enter your mind when determining my variances, I ask that you also let other considerations enter your mind. Consider what the village will lose if this historic barn can't be respectfully restored. Consider that no other applicant would be willing to go to these lengths and fight this hard for an outcome that preserves historic fabric. Consider what will happen to this lot and this building if someone this dedicated isn't able to move forward. What else could possibly happen? I know you didn't create this situation, but you're in a position to help write it. Secondly, if you're going to consider precedent, you should be much more concerned with applications asking for a small variance to build an extension or add a shed than you should be for mine. We've proven in what must be some of the most rigorous research any individual has ever presented to this board that this is an unprecedented situation. In fact, my application and subsequent presentations are a model of proving that an undesirable change will not be created, that the benefit cannot be sought via another method, that the variances are not significant relative to the context of the village, that the proposal will not have adverse effects on the neighborhood, and that this difficulty was not self-created. I don't have anything else to offer. This board, and rather than kick the can down the road, I look forward to a quick conclusion. I'd be open to a vote tonight if that was on the table. I thank you for all of your time and hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Sam, those were really good comments. From my comment about a vote tonight is this hearing, a tremendous amount of effort on your part and our part has gone into this, especially on your part and your consultant's part. And we, as a board, my recommendation to the board is that we take a little bit of time to be sure that we craft a fair decision for you and for the village. And, and also knowing full well that, that it's likely that, that our decision, one, one side of the argument is going to be very happy with the decision and there's going to be another side of the argument, people on the other side of the argument are very upset by the decision. And so my feeling is that we'd be not be bullied into trying to make a decision tonight or even get into discussions at this point. I think that the board should review all the, all that's been said, all that's been submitted on their own in the next couple of weeks, and then we can start deliberations. And as I understand it, and I would say that deliberations would be in a workshop format that the public can listen to, you can hear, it's like watching open surgery. You're not going to like it, but you can, you'll be able to hear what we, what we say, what we're thinking. And we will make our way to a decision. But I would strongly urge us, at this point, a good goal would be to complete, wrap up the public hearing, close out tonight, and then two weeks hence, we would start deliberations on the matter. I'll circle back. You, I thought you made a very good closing statement. Do you have any, does the board have any questions or issues they would like to raise with Sam? I guess not. Does the public have any issues or right now that they would like to raise with Sam? Or Sam, would you like to have any of your consultants talk?
No, from my team, we're good to go. So we're looking forward to hearing from the public and then closing this out.
All right, so then I'll ask the board, 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 Zoning Board of Appeals, does anybody have any issues or discussion that they would like to, to question Sam? Or I see his consultant, Paul Henderson, I think that's Paul Henderson there. Does the board have any issues or questions they would like to raise?
I have maybe more of a logistical question that none of the materials are up on the website, the electronic versions. And I have paper copies, but was the, is there any plan to provide the ZBA members with materials electronically?
Yes, I'm going to go through the, I, I spent the afternoon going through the file to be sure, and, you know, be sure we have what we need and it's complete. And then I'm going to, I'm going to enlist the village clerk in making packets so that the, all board members will have, you know, all relevant documents. Everything that's been, everything of record. So that everybody will have a, a full set of everything to, to review.
Okay.
I have no questions. I think the, the whole plan and proposal for the variances and design of the building were well presented and, and very detailed. So I don't see any particular questions. Am I in?
Good. Eric?
I have nothing to add now, no.
Okay. Let's see, who else? I'm having a brain freeze here. I guess it's just us. Yeah, okay, that's right, because we don't have Eric. Okay, all right. So we, I can, I see some members of the public. Any other members of the public want to make any comments?
I would like to say something.
State your name and, for the record, an address for the record.
Donna Namath, 22 Parsonage Street.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't see how Sam can say that having a house there would not impact the neighborhood. He doesn't live here. He doesn't live here, he lives in Garrison. This putting a house here would most certainly impact us, especially Sarah and Tom, and Judy Vaultidge. The house would be so close to them. So it will have a negative impact on our neighborhood. Second of all, the list of lots that he gave you that have houses built on him that are similar to his size, how many of these lots were built on after the zoning codes came into effect? There are a lot of houses on this street alone that if they were to be built today, wouldn't be allowed, including mine. My lot is small, but these houses were all built over 100 years ago. And you can't compare that to what he wants to do on a substandard lot today. It's like comparing apples to oranges. These houses existed before the zoning code. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Sam, any response, any comment? I'm not trying to get you to comment. I'm just, you know, making sure that you have the opportunity.
Appreciate that. And no, everything else we've stated so far, I think addresses our opinion on those.
Okay. All right.
I would like to say something. I am Thomas Huber, and I live adjacent to the property. And I just wanted to say that I know that the lots were illegally divided, and it's something that we do have to deal with. However, I'd like to point out that a lot that is now called 21 Parsonage was always on the tax register paid for as a barn or a garage. So that is what we were talking about, is that, as you know, we're changing it to a residence. And I would just like to say that, you know, you talk about precedents or historical, that has never been anything but a barn. And if you want to keep the historical, you know, significance of it, it should remain a barn. And that is how we feel. We love the barn. We appreciate Sam, how he's approached this and that he, you know, does want to keep this beautiful structure. However, we would argue that making it a residence does not keep its historical, you know, charm. Anyway, that's all I have to say. And I thank the board for taking this very seriously.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, I don't hear any. So as far as I'm concerned, at this point, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, a vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. We will start doing our homework. I will now text Aaron and tell him that he's up.
Donald, when you forward the information to all the board members, can you also copy me on that so I make sure I have everything?
I will do that.
Okay, thank you. And you guys don't need me any further, correct?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you, everybody. Good seeing everybody, stay well, stay healthy.
Yep, likewise. Thank you.
All right, so I've texted Aaron. So we'll wait for him, and then we'll go on to the next.
Does that mean you don't need me anymore either, Donald?
No, we're all good, Sam. It's all done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Hey, John Martin, how are you feeling?
Sure, it's good, it's coming along.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's going to take a few months to come around, but...
You made it through your surgery okay.
Yeah, yeah. The shoulder is rebuilt.
All right.
I was watching surfing videos today to try to get back in the good mindset. I'll stay away from the big waves.
I don't know why Aaron's not coming back on.
No, I see his...
Are you seen?
Yeah, I see his name, so he's probably just logging on.
All right, he's coming, okay, good.
He looks like Mission Control. That is Aaron with all those headphones, man, it's great. Good job, Donald, thank you.
Aaron logged off. I imagine he's trying to log on again.
Hi, can you hear me?
There you are.
Great. Okay, we've got Karen. I'm just going to take a moment to contact the applicants for the Benedict Road application, and then we'll get started. Okay, everybody ready to get going on 53 Parrot Street? Anybody not ready?
Oh, sir.
We're ready, ready.
Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing for an application for a variance of 1.75 feet to the side yard to build an access ramp and a deck extension of 53 Parrot Street. The applicant is Maria Riccapido, and her architect who's been working on the project and presented at the workshop is Karen Parks. So we'll begin the public hearing with an explanation of what the project is. We can then have the board discuss anything, any questions with the applicant. And finally, any members of the public can join the discussion after you get all that information out. Karen has sent in copies of the notification mailing receipts and also the affidavit for the public hearing sign, which I've also seen up in the yard personally. So I think we are all set to go. So Karen or Maria, whoever's starting, go ahead, please.
Okay, hi, I'm Karen Parks, and I'm here with Maria Riccapido and Carolyn Riccapido. And I'll present the project. Aaron, would it make sense for me to put the plans up on the screen like we did last time?
Sure, that'd be great. Michael, if you can make that possible, please.
You should be able to, Karen, give it a whirl.
Okay, great. Okay, excellent, it looks like I can. Okay, I'm going to, can everybody see the site plan?
No.
No, not yet.
No, okay.
Well, I've got it on my computer.
Okay. And now?
There we go.
Okay, great, okay. Thanks for bearing with me as I work through technology. Okay, our proposal is to construct a ramp on the property that would allow for an accessible route and entrance from the driveway area of the lot to the first floor area of the dwelling. So our proposed location for the ramp is on the southeast easterly side of the dwelling. And just for orientation, this is Parrot Street. This is the front of the house facing Parrot Street. To the southeast is the existing driveway. And our proposed ramp location leads from the driveway along the side of the house, and it meets up with an existing deck at the back of the house where there is a door accessing the first floor of the dwelling area. So because this location actually is on the side yard, and because of its proximity to the property line, it requires a side yard setback variance. So because this is an existing non-conforming lot, it falls under the supplementary regulation for residential districts. It's Section 134-17 subsection E. And that allows the side yard to be reduced to 7.5 feet provided that both side yards total at least four inches per foot of lot width. Our lot width is 50 feet, which would equate to 200 inches or 16.7 feet required for both side yards. So as you can see, if we set our side yard on the southeasterly side at 7.5 feet, we have the additional 9.17 feet required to equal the total distance needed. So thus, we're working with the side yard setback of 7.5 feet. And our ramp location, as planned, will be located 5.75 feet from the property line at its closest point. At the other far corner, it's approximately 6.2 feet from the property line. Thus, we're asking for a 1.75-foot variance to the required side yard setback. So our goal for the ramp was to create an access route and entrance to the house that was the most direct and practical route from the existing driveway area. In determining what was going to work best, both for the property and the owners, we explored a few options in terms of locations. So before I get into the details of the ramp, I'll actually go over the alternatives that we explored and how we ended up with this as our preferred option. So if you bear with me, I'm just going to try and find the... Sorry about this. Okay, can everybody see the next set with the colored ramp locations?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So we explored locating the ramp in the front of the property. Again, this is Parrot Street, and the shortest and most direct route into the house would be through the front door. Again, the driveway located here. So if we're using this as a general access point from the driveway, the shortest and most direct route would be a ramp in the front yard that would ramp up to the existing front porch and into the front house, into the front of the house. The travel distance from that location is approximately 60 feet. Again, on the side yard, we have our proposed ramp location. Again, starting from a consistent access point in the driveway to the first floor of the dwelling, the travel distance of our proposed ramp location is approximately 78 feet. So in exploring the ramp at the front of the house, number one, it sits entirely within the front yard setback, which would require a much greater variance than the one we're requesting. The front yard setback is 25 feet, which sits right at the face of the enclosed portion of the house. The proposed ramp location, number one, would sit entirely within that setback. In addition to that, we would lose a very valuable tree in the front yard and eat up most of the front yard for the ramp. And lastly, we felt that this is just a general schematic of what the ramp would look like at the front of the house, again, without balusters shown. And we felt that it was a very significant structure being placed in the front yard that would actually deter from the style and look of the neighboring houses and the streetscape as a whole, and felt that it was a very obtrusive structure to place in the front of the house. As a second alternative, which would require no variance, we explored locating the ramp on the northwesterly side of the house. Again, keeping a common access starting point at the driveway area, we developed the route around the side of the house and up to the back porch. In doing so, the ramp length would be approximately the same as the ramp on the existing driveway side. We'd need to pull it away from the surface of the house, given existing utilities. There is an existing air conditioning unit, as well as a propane tank, a tree, and a number of foundation plantings and shrubbery. So to try and maintain those items, we'd pull the ramp approximately five feet off of the property line. Again, we'd be well within the side yard setback, so it would not require a variance. However, it would require an additional paved path of some sort to connect the ramp itself to the driveway area. to the driveway area. The total distance of travel from that point around the house and to the back deck is approximately 105 feet. Again, our proposed ramp location is approximately 78 feet. So for practical reasons and logic in general, to provide the most direct and easily accessible route to the house without a huge impact on the neighborhood, we felt that locating the ramp on the southeasterly side of the house would be more appropriate and would cut down the distance of travel by approximately 27 feet. Okay. I'm just gonna bring up the other plan again. Sorry, bear with me. Okay, so back to our site plan and our proposed location. We have our existing driveway, and we're maintaining two parking spaces so that no zoning variance will be required in terms of parking. So what that does is it, it does allow for our ramp to be located from the end of the driveway to meet up with the existing deck of the house. To accommodate a ramp that's wide enough with railing and comfortable enough to accommodate access, we actually need to extend the, the footprint of the existing deck by approximately one foot eight inches to meet the width of the ramp. Just looking for... Sorry, bear with me. I was all set up before. I just need to find the plans to show you. Just take me one more second. Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is a blown up section of the house plan. Again, the driveway, Parrot Street, the existing plan. Currently, there is a stair to, from the deck down to the grade, which we'll be removing to place the ramp in that location. The proposed ramp plan, again, would come from the driveway. We'd have approximately 17 feet of ramp with a five-foot landing, just to cut the overall length, and another 18 feet of ramp. The shaded area indicates the portion of deck that would have to be extended, one foot eight inches, to meet the width of the ramp. The deck exists. We will be raising the floor level seven and a half inches to meet the floor level of the interior of the dwelling. With the removal of the stair, we're also adding a new stair at the back of the deck, which was, is within all of our setback requirements, so no variance is required for that. Another part of the project, which again does not require variance, is a basement An elevation of the ramp is as shown with the 17-foot ramped sloped section, a five-foot landing, and an eight-foot sloped section up to the existing deck with a new stair down the back of the prop, to the back of the property. Okay, so that pretty much sums up the, the application. A couple of just small comments I would also add, which had a part in our decision, mainly for choosing this location for the ramp versus the other side of the property, which does not require variance, was just the, the extent of the ramp cutting into the yard, the potential removal of plant materials, and the addition of another paved pathway, and cutting down on, or rather adding more impermeable surface. And also, just in keeping with the comprehensive plan for the village, trying to maintain trees and greenery versus adding additional hardscape. And we felt that the, the ramp location on this side of the building is really in a utilitarian section of the property, which also allows the homeowner to utilize the yard area as it is, as a yard. So I think that summarizes it, and I'll just defer to Maria and Carolyn in case they have anything else to add at this point.
Hi, I'm Maria Riccapido. This is my mother Carolyn Riccapido. And we just wanna say, I, my mother is 85 and has just moved in with me, and so she has a hip replacement and has a heart and some arthritis, so has a hard time with stairs. So this ramp is an attempt to make her, keep her as independent as she's used to being. And she has just moved from a single-floor ranch-style house, and so, and she still drives, so I'd really love for her to be able to get out of the car, you know, and just walk up a ramp and go into her bedroom, her sitting room, and not have to have someone there to watch her, you know? I, I hope that she can have a lovely, cold spring, independent, happy life here. And do you wanna say anything?
Well, I also feel that it would be safer for me to be able to exit the house quickly that way, rather than struggling with stairs in the front, which I have to go very slow if I'm going to do that. So it would be a matter of independence and safety for me.
So other than that, we just wanna say thank you for how careful you are with, with considering these factors. And if we, you have any questions, I'm glad to try to answer any, or I'm sure Karen is.
I have a question in terms of what, what is going on, on the neighbor's property on the side of the ramp that, on the side of your work, on the side that the ramp's gonna be up close to them? What's going on on their property in that area?
So there is a fence.
Something like that?
Yeah, I'm going to pull up the site plan again, if I can.
Karen, you see where I'm going? I'm trying to determine the impact on the neighbor.
Yep, I do. So that, that side of the property, there's actually a fence, which is owned by the neighbor, which I would say it's a six-foot fence, and that runs along the length of the driveway. So there is a buffer in place that is owned by the neighbor currently. And, sorry, I'm just trying to find the site.
And there's some tall plantings, like bushes, between the two houses that are, I think technically on his side of the property, the Robinson side of the property.
Right, correct. Does that answer your question, Donald?
Yeah, I guess I was looking for a little visual or something, but...
I think that site plan that you have has...
Shows the fence.
Just to clarify, his driveway is on the opposite side of his house. So his driveway is not on that side, and then the driveway for the property on the other side of mine is also on the opposite side.
So your utilitarian side of your house borders the non-utilitarian portion of his yard?
No, it's really, it's a path back to a, a sort of an entrance to the basement, and then an entrance through this six-foot or higher fence to his backyard. So it's not like it's just landscaped. It's got his garbage, his, you know, sort of a path to a, what looks like a kind of a little bump out that then goes down to his basement.
When I looked at, at the property, to me, the utilitarian section is between these two houses for both of the houses. And on the other side, you've got two basically unencumbered yards between the Riccapido house and the one to the north of that, that are just planted and, and unencumbered by any kind of structures, at least at this point. And there is a, there is a six-foot fence there that is, and there's a swimming pool, I think, in the backyard. On the other side of that house, there are two driveways side by side. So the, the house, the Robinson house is, it doesn't have a nice side yard like 53 does.
So this looks like, Karen, I mean, this looks like a side yard to me. This looks like the utilitarian side yard.
Right. That's what Maria was talking about, how there's a path in the basement entrance. And then they do have, you can see the fence to here, and then this is her driveway.
Okay. Karen, could you also, 'cause I'm a little brain dead, could you also just give me the bullet points again on why you, the, the negatives against putting the, the ramp on the other side of the house?
Sure.
Not one option, forget about that, but the one where you go on the other side, where you wouldn't need a variance?
Right.
Why we, why you wouldn't do that?
Right. The, the number one reason is just the simple, logical, practical nature of trying to create an access with the shortest and most direct route to the house. So that, that alternate route, it was another 27 feet in length, you know, which doesn't seem long, but it is a distance, you know, to travel if, you know, you're using a walker or have a disability of some form. So I think that that is the primary reason, for sure. I also do think the impact and, and breaking up, basically the ramp would divide the usable side yard of the property. Putting the ramp right against the house on that side would require moving utilities. There, this doesn't exist. This is proposed, but there is an existing AC condenser unit. The propane tank is here. There's a tree right against the house, as well as foundation plantings. So putting it right against the house to try and maintain a usable side yard is much less feasible, because equipment would have to be relocated. So the ramp ends up kind of dividing the usable side yard right, right through the middle of the property. And then again, we're creating the additional impermeable surface of adding a paved walk to access the front yard and the concrete walk, and that's dividing the front yard landscape area. So both, again, the primary reason is to create the most direct route into the house, short of taking up the entire front yard, and also maintain a usable yard and landscaping around the property.
Karen, it just occurred to me, what about a motorized chair? Do they make those for exterior uses, either for the front or the, the back deck?
I, to be honest, I don't know. I'm sure they do. I, I, I would think they do. That's not something we, we have investigated.
I have investigated that issue, and it's done, but it's very, very expensive, and it's very difficult to maintain. And it would not be something that would be within the realm of a homeowner to be able to, expected to, to afford. That would be something for like, the Museum of Modern Art might do it, you know, with a grant from somebody, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't work for a situation like this.
Great, thank you.
Inside, that's another story, but outside, forget it.
Just, can I make a comment?
Please.
Just so you know, I've set up the house so that my mother's living quarters are gonna be entirely on the ground, this main floor of the house. So when she's inside the house, she doesn't have to take any stairs, because, as I mentioned, she's on a, she has a rollator, a walker, and a cane, and is not in a wheelchair at this point. But we did wanna make sure the, the ramp would be wide enough, should that, you know, be a need, if, even if she were temporarily in a wheel, wheelchair. That's all.
Anything else from the applicant or any more questions from the board for the applicant?
Yeah, as to the length of the ramp up, what went behind the thinking of the need for the length of that? Were there any certain guidelines followed for ADA purposes, or just, just curious as to whether the ramp could be shorter, or?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So the ramp cannot be shorter. The, the, the ramp is the steepest allowed by the residential code of New York. So because this is not a public setting or a commercial setting, we aren't required to meet ADA standards. However, we are required to meet the standards of the residential building code for ramp requirements. The, the recommended pitch of a ramp is a one-to-12 pitch, so one-inch rise for every 12 inches of run. In cases where you have site constraints, or it's, it's not feasible to meet that, the steepest ramp that you can create is a one-on-eight pitch, which is what we're doing. And the reason we are doing that is so that we can maintain the two parking spaces on the property. So here's the limit line in order for us to maintain two 18-foot parking spaces. So if we were to actually extend the ramp to make it the most comfortable, which would be a one-on-12 pitch, it would actually be longer. So we've reduced the ramp to accommodate the steepest pitch possible. The, the only thing that is somewhat of a variable, although there is also a maximum distance you can rise without a landing, but the, the addition of the landing, again, is for comfort. This is a long ramp. It's 17 feet in this section and 18 feet in this section. So a 35-foot ramp is a long stretch to go without a resting point. So we do feel that the landing is necessary. So I think that answers the question, but it's basically the minimum length that we can make it, given the height we need to try, the height we need to rise from the grade to the porch level.
Very good.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm good.
Do we have anybody from the public here tonight who would like to speak about this? Okay, so I think we can close the public hearing and get into our discussion. Somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Parrot Street here. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Parrott Street here, this application.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think I heard every individual voice there.
So, Erin, if you could pick up your voice just a little bit, just a little bit.
Is that any better?
Yeah, just so we can hear everything, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So I, I think we can jump right into our five criteria. I would just say that I, you know, I live on the next block and I've come by the house a few times, looking at it with this proposal in mind. And I agree that the proposed ramp is the best location for it. They're really like, there's, there's a large section of green space between the two, this house and the house to the north, and I think it would be nice to preserve that. Also, it's kind of hard to tell from the drawings, but the front yard is pretty small. And I think putting the ramp in there would put in a feeling and looking cramped. So I did, from my visual inspection, agreed that this was the best location, and it will be frequently hidden by the, by the parked cars. All right, so let's jump in. The benefits offered by the applicant can or cannot be achieved by any other feasible means. And I will say that it can be, but that the other options presented all have drawbacks that, that in my opinion should not, that should rule out as options. Mainly, the breaking up of the side yard and the cluttering up and the cramped look of having it fully in the front yard, which would require a larger variance also. Donald?
Yeah, I think that the, the location of the proposed ramp poses the least negative effect on the neighbor, the neighborhood or the character of the property or surrounding properties.
It's 8:45.
If you put it on the other side, you're, you're making a handicap ramp more visually important than it should be. The ramp should be, it's, the ramp is a service, it's a service nature to the dwelling and on the side that they're putting it on, it actually appears more that way.
Thank you. Laura?
I agree. And also, it was explained that, that on the other side, it would be a 27 feet longer. And given that this is for safety and mobility, reducing the, the length is an important benefit to be sought.
Good point.
Erin?
I agree with all those comments, and I have nothing else to add.
John?
Like Eric says, I agree with the comments already made, they're on point, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, number two, the proposed variance will or will not produce an undesirable change. The character of the neighborhood and a detriment to nearby properties will or will not be created by the granting of this variance. Donald, I think you touched on this a little bit, do you want to?
No, it will not, it will.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Well, it will, it will not be a detriment to neighborhood properties nor a detriment to the neighborhood. I can't remember the exact language, but it won't be, because its location is the appropriate service location for this part of the construction.
I agree, and I think it's worth noting that there were no, there were no neighbor comments in opposition.
Erin?
I agree, no significant detriment.
I agree, as you indicated, that the driveway and the cars would likely be blocking the visual nature of it and that it's of a length that's really the minimum length of the ramp that they're looking for, because it would be overly steeped if made shorter. And I don't think there's any detriment to the neighborhood from the street.
Okay, and I also agree with the previous comments. The required variance requested is or is not substantial, Laura?
I think it's not substantial. It's the, the minimum amount required by, to make it a handicap, wheelchair accessible ramp and hugs the house to minimize, minimize the amount.
I agree with Laura and that they, they've done what they've could with the project. We've looked at all the other possibilities, and this is what's, what would work best for the purpose of which they needed. And it only, and there's only a small variance really, in my mindset of, you know, a little bit under two feet for what would necessarily be 16 feet, given the 50-yard, 50-foot width of the house. I don't, I don't think that's an exorbitant inset into the side yard setback. And particularly as it's only a ramp and not a housing structure that's moving out involved into that area.
Point, good point.
Erin?
I agree with those comments. The request is not substantial.
And Donald?
No, the request is not substantial. The goal is to get mom in the house safely, and they've done the, the, they provided a code, code compliant needs to do that. And it's not, it's not any bigger than it has to be, and the net effect is not substantial.
And I also agree with the above comments, the proposed variance will or will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Eric, do you want to?
I cannot see any physical or environmental negative effects, no.
I agree, and there is also note that it maintained, it was one of the alternatives that didn't require removing landscaping or, or existing trees.
John?
I agree, it doesn't have a significant impact considering that one of the non-variance means of accomplishing the same goal would have required a pervious sidewalk probably in the front of the house to round around the other end of the building. And from what I can gather, that the, the ramp will be built over what would be pervious ground, so if there's any drip down or anything, it'll be absorbed. I, I'm assuming that, but from, from the diagrams, that's what appeared to me to be the case, so there wouldn't be any runoff issues.
Karen, what is the construction of the ramp deck?
Karen, you're muted.
Sorry about that. It will be a wood ramp construction.
Now, the review on boards with spaces in between where the rainwater will go down through.
Correct.
Okay, that confirms what John said.
And it'll be natural ground beneath the ramp itself, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's what it seemed.
Yeah, we will have some pier footings naturally, but otherwise.
Donald, do you have any?
No, I, I agree with the comments I've already made in terms of, there's no, there's no detrimental environmental effect on the neighborhood.
The alleged difficulty necessitating the variance was or was not self-created? John?
Well, I guess like with any other typical variance request, I mean, for the most part, I believe it's self-created, although there's, there's a specific need in this case. I don't know, it's, it's a closer question than usual. Normally, it's more definitely self-created, and it's just a matter of want for space, but in this case, it seems to be more of a, a health need.
Okay, I agree that it was self-created. However, the, the option presented is, is, in my opinion at least, at least, it's the best option of the ones that we've seen, that Karen presented.
I guess I have a hard time calling this self-created. I think it's important that it's a, a medical and safety addition to the home.
If it was a, if this was in the shape of an addition, we'd have, it would be an entirely different discussion.
Donald, do you want to continue with that thought then?
Well, I, I, that doesn't address the, whether it's self-created or not, but it just occurred to me, you know, that what Laura was saying was that it is a, and what John said, it's not, they're not talking about living space here, you're talking about, you know, basically kind of deck space, ramp space. And, and, and just to distinguish this from any other potential, you know, variance request, the, the nature of the, of the, of the construction, it being not habitable space, it being a ramp, being access to the dwelling, that, that, that has a big, a big impact on, I think, I think it has a big impact on our, I know it does on my thinking on it. Self-created, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't think it's self-created. I mean, you know, it's just a situation, you know, I mean, you could say it's self-created because you've got a mom, but I mean, you know, I mean, you know, you know, I mean, it's, forget about it, you know?
Okay, great.
I, I do, I agree with John's comment, that's an interesting gray area as far as self-creation, because we're really talking about accommodating the natural process of aging, which everyone faces, and it's an inherent part of living in wherever you live. Eventually, there must be an accommodation for age. So it's a kind of, it's a, it's a, so I would say it's at a gray area. And it's hard to say, but clearly, all the other factors weigh in favor of the application, so it really doesn't matter.
Right. I guess I would add that when I think of something, whether it's self-created, I'm also looking at the question, are there other options that require less variances or no variances? So to choose, to, if you have an option that doesn't require variance and you choose one that does, you're kind of, in a way, self-creating the, the need for the variance, which is separate from the need for the actual thing in itself.
That's a really good point, Erin, I think. But that's why they came to ZDA.
So I, I think I can sum this up as a balancing statement pretty easily to say that we, the board found this to be the, the best option, even though there were a couple of other options presented that we would call feasible. There would be no harm to the neighborhood, no undesirable change, because it's being placed in an existing service location, and the ramp will partially or occasionally be blocked by cars in the driveway. We all agree that it was not a substantial variance, and that the proposed ramp only meets the minimal variance, that it meets the, the minimum state guidelines for the ramp incline and so on, to meet, you know, to be code compliant and achieve the goal. There's no environmental impact. We noted that we're not removing any landscaping or trees or pouring any concrete for sidewalks, and there's no runoff this year. And finally, there was a stronger indication than usual in our applications that this is not a self-created difficulty, because eventually we, we can't avoid needing something like this as we all get older. So.
And maybe add about the no public negative comment, no public comment either way.
Also, we've received no letters, emails, or in-person public comment in favor or against the project. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve this resolution, which is?
It's nine o'clock.
Oh, four dash 2019 for a 1.75-foot variance to the side yard for construction of an access ramp and deck extension, I would gladly hear that motion.
I'll make that motion with the language you just specified.
Thank you.
I'll sign him in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So the next step then is for me to send in the finished resolution to Jeff, and he, Jeff Peticovich, our village clerk, and he will then follow up with a building permit and the other stuff.
Oh, I think we should thank Karen Parks and also the client for paying for it, for showing us the alternates visually and letting us look at them and join with them to understand what was going on. That's very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, effort on the designer's point, and it takes money from the client, and I understand that that's, that's a sacrifice, but it's much appreciated because then you can understand what's going on.
And Donald, that's a good point, because I think that should be something that should be made in, put in each one of the applications to show possible alternatives of the design and location.
I agree. You know, that we ask for, you know, were there alternates, and people just go, no. And so, you know, it's like, they don't, they don't want to let us in, they don't want us to understand the thinking. And, and it's just very good to be able to see the thinking, and it helps us make a good decision.
Yeah, exactly. It helps make the decision quicker, instead of a lot of people guessing, and you can't read people's minds, and sometimes the requests made are quite onerous when there seem to be other avenues, but that's. And sometimes the requests made are quite onerous when there seem to be other avenues, but that's my.
Great. So thank you again, and I will follow up by email with the
Excellent. Thank you. Great. Thank you to all of you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care. Bye.
Okay, so coming up next, does anybody need a break? Should we just jump right?
I'm all set. I'm ready.
Okay.
Anybody?
Coming up next, we've got a workshop for 11 Benedict Road. And we have Madeline Sanchez on the phone, I think, to present this. So Madeline, just so you know, at workshops, we're not going to get into the pros or cons of whether you should be granted a variance, but we just want to make sure you have all the application materials in and give us a chance to see the proposal, to make sure that the correct variances are being requested and so forth. So does everybody have a copy of the the application? This isn't on the website.
You sent it by email a while ago. Is that right?
Yeah, what was the, what was that date of that email? I could look it up.
Okay, I'm gonna look at this.
Six twenty-nine, seven, six.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, what's, what's, what was the heading of it that I could?
Eleven Benedict Road zoning, but it, and it looks, it's just on six twenty-nine that there were PDFs attached, and it was from Jeff.
Done.
So Madeline, would you like to just kind of introduce the project and tell us what's coming on and what you're proposing?
Sure. The current house is already non-compliant because it infringes into the front setback. When the house was built, the front setback was a different dimension required. So it's already infringing in the setback. So, but not by much, because the site curves and the front of the house is perpendicular. So it just sort of slices a bit of the corner of the house. That's where it's infringing. So anyway, the proposal is to remove an existing part of the house that's on, the house is like a split-level home. So you enter it on the upper level, and then there's a retaining wall, and then the driveway comes in at the lower level. So they're going to remove that lower-level piece and then replace it with a garage, a two-car garage, and then extend it so that it meets the dimensions required for a two-car garage. And then on the upper level, they're going to add on top of the garage only half of the mass of the garage, adding a bedroom and a laundry room and a bathroom. And the laundry room is also like an office, too, like a small, a small office. So by extending that dimension, we are now further encroaching into the front yard setback. So we looked at setting the garage back, but unfortunately, there's a pool, an existing in-ground pool where we would have been able to push it back. So that didn't give us the option of pushing the garage further back into the site. And then we put it on that side because that's where the curb cut is with where the driveway is. And we wouldn't have been able to sit it on the other side, because then we would be encroaching into the setback even further. So there was this natural place to put it. It's also already blacktop there. So that was the other reason why we put it there, so we wouldn't be, you know, changing the permeability or any of that. So it was really the only practical location to add the garage. And the addition aligns with the existing house so that you can get into it easily into the existing house. So there's like other practical reasons why it went on that side. So I sent, in the package, there's the existing survey and then the proposed site plan, the architectural drawings. And then I also have the referral, the deed, the letter from the owner, the short environmental assessment form, and the zoning conformance worksheet. So I believe the package is complete.
Which, which is the, I'm trying to get a sense of what is defined the PDF that shows me the changes as distinct from what is already there. Is that?
Well, there should be two PDFs. One is the map of the existing survey, and one is the map that shows the changes.
So I've got Skanga Survey Two. Is that the one that you mean?
Yeah, and the second one also shows the setbacks.
I don't see the, I don't see the, that, I see the existing survey, but I don't see the proposed survey.
Well, I definitely sent it to Jeff, so you may not have included it.
Donald, if you've got that email from Jeff.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
There's an attachment called Skanga Survey Two.
Survey Two.
Survey Two is identical to Survey One, am I?
Yeah, that's what I, that's kind of what I see.
Right.
I think we didn't get the full packet. I don't, I don't think we received environmental, that environmental survey either. And I, just that the ZBA application isn't, the, with the, the kind of worksheet is blank. If I'm looking at it right. So we may not have gotten the full set of what you sent in.
Well, he asked me to send the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven paperwork, which would be the appeal application and the referral, the zoning conformance worksheet, the deed, the letter from the owner, and the short environmental assessment form in one PDF. So that should all be bound together. Then the larger drawings, the site plan and the proposed site plan and the architectural drawings, those were individual PDFs. So all together, you should have four PDFs. That's how I sent them to him.
So there's a, there's an attachment, Skanga Eleven Benedict Road ZBA application paperwork.
Right.
And I do see the completed application in there. A lot of the questions are blank because they don't apply. They're down on the third page of that, I think. The appropriate questions are answered. And we've got the referral. We've got a copy of the deed.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, great, great.
Yep, yep, yep.
Which, which, where was that?
So the site plan is missing, the second site plan, site plan two.
So I've got, so first to answer John's question, it's the attachment called Skanga Eleven Benedict Road ZBA application paperwork.
Okay, and that, is that, which email was that with? What date?
That's the one from June 29th at 8:49 a.m. from Jeff.
Okay, I've got the eight, I got the six twenty-nine open. All right, okay.
So then we've got an existing survey PDF, and we have a Survey Two PDF. And I think what what's not clear to me from Survey Two is is, where does it go? I mean, it looks a lot like Survey One to me, and I'm not sure what the
They are identical.
What the difference is here.
Well, Survey, the Survey Two should show a longer house. So where it says overhang and Survey One, that part is coming out, and we added to that. So maybe, maybe the Survey One got sent twice or something.
That may be. Did, is the garage going to be built into the new, into the existing structure?
We're actually demolishing part of the existing structure to build the garage. So there's a trade-off, there's a trade-off in square footage.
Are they joining each other?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's an attached garage that we're proposing.
Okay, yeah. I wasn't picking it up, and I was just making sure that was the case.
So should I re, should I, should I resend to Jeff the PDF number two, the Skanga Two?
Is there any chance you can send that to us now?
Well, unfortunately, I have no power and I have no internet.
Oh.
So I'm on my, I'm on my landline because of the storm. We still haven't gotten power where we live up on East Mountain.
Oh, okay.
So I would have to send that when we get power. I'm so sorry, but I, I thought I sent it to Jeff, so maybe he has it.
You, you did a site plan which shows the, 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 clearly shows where you're adding.
Yeah.
It clearly shows the distances from where you're adding to the, to the property lines.
And to the setbacks.
Yeah, see, I have in front of me one document that has no setbacks drawn on it. It's just what was required. You asked for an existing survey of what's there. And it says on the lower right-hand corner, existing. Then I have a second plan that on the lower right-hand corner says proposed. Do you have that?
No.
No, I don't.
Okay.
We don't have that in the, in the email. I have that in my hand, though, actually, the hard copies.
Well, maybe Aaron can make a
You know, we can just pick them on, the, you know, the, the rest of it looks pretty detailed. And so, you know, I'm okay to put them on for the next, you know, for the hearing. And they all have a site.
The, the, I also gave Jeff six hard copies of everything, because he said you all needed hard copies.
Well, we haven't, we haven't been getting the copies because we, people aren't going to
We're living in COVID world right now.
The village office.
Right, well, I had to go to the village office to deliver them. That was no fun. Okay.
Well, I'll grab my copy from the village office. I was just assuming that everything had been covered in the, that's why I didn't head over.
So, so I apologize. This is, this is on me. I should have double-checked to make sure that, that we have the PDFs for everybody. So when I look at the proposed site plan, it's, it's a little hard for me to see what is existing and what is new. So I might suggest a different crosshatch pattern, or if you can, if you can make that easier to see.
Okay, like a different color?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I have the, the existing labeled existing, and then there's arrows that point to what's addition. And then on the architectural plans, it shows what's existing and what's addition. But I will color it in and put in like a different crosshatch so that it's clearer.
Great, thank you. And it's not just for us, but also for anybody in the public who might want to look at these.
Sure.
And, and so with this new addition, even though you are removing portions of the existing house, there won't become an area variance issue for the entire property of exceeding thirty percent allowable for improved lots?
No, the existing is eleven percent, and the proposed would be thirteen percent.
Okay, and I, I think, you know, if you could, before I forget to ask, you could do, get aerial images in photographic form to show us at the, how it might impact neighboring properties, what it might look at with not only overhead aerial satellite images of the neighborhood and the house and its location, but also photographs of the street scape up and down, so the board can have an understanding of any kind of impacts it might have visually on the road. You know, to neighbors.
Did I send those to Jeff? Did I send those to Jeff? Or did I send those to Aaron?
You can send everything to Jeff.
Okay.
And he'll forward it to us. Thank you.
The road, you want the, the road in front and in back? You want both sides of the street?
As long as it's, if the development or the planned improvements would be visible.
Yeah, it's a cul-de-sac, actually, Benedict Road.
Well, it's also important to know what the neighboring properties look like to see what you're proposing, because there's a community type, if there's one of the statutory standards to look at the impact of the surrounding
Sure.
buildings.
Yeah, I know, whenever we do a historic review, we do that. It's required, it's asked for in the application, but it wasn't asked for here. Otherwise, I would have supplied that. I have taken a lot of photos. Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any, this goes down to Kimball, right, on the back? So there's, I don't think there's anything in the back we need to worry about, is there?
No, it slopes down, it's, it's sort of, there's really nothing behind them. I mean, there is, but it's way, way down.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got, so you're going to bring photos, and you're going to indicate a little more clearly what is new on the site plan. And we've got the architectural drawings. And let's look at the neighbor list.
Yeah, the neighbor list is on page one. That's the one that, that's the one that Jeff gave me, that list.
Oh, Jeff gave you the list?
Yeah.
So we've got basically the whole block. And then you do have the neighbor behind you on Kimball.
Mm-hmm, Casparians.
Okay. So, so that all looks good to me. The front yard setback, that looks correct on the referral. So I, I think we're all set to go if the board's comfortable with the application and the changes we discussed.
Yeah, I think just to ask, to be clear, so the, the new improvement, the addition, is going to be put in an area where there's currently just an overhang. There's not a removable, you're not removing any portion of the existing house itself.
Yes, yes, we are. We're removing the existing family room.
Okay, good, all right.
Yeah, and then we're also, and there's also an overhang that we're removing. Right, so there's a trade-off with the square footage.
Okay, very good. I don't have any questions.
So I'm looking at our calendar. Our next meeting is the, is the sixth, so the next meeting is the twentieth. Is everybody okay to have a meeting, public hearing on the twentieth? Is anybody going to be gone?
Well, I'm supposed to be in Lake George, but I can access it through Zoom.
Yeah, I actually can't do it. I have to take my son to college, so it would have to be the following one.
Yeah, I'm out of, I'm out of the, I'm out, I'm not here.
So then we're looking at September third. How does that work for everybody?
I thought we, just to go back, Donald, I thought we were voting on the
The bro.
On bro.
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at a I'm sorry, I screwed up. I have trouble with my calendar. So we're talking about the twentieth of August?
Yes.
Yeah, our next, next meeting is the twentieth of August.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that.
But Madeline said she can't do that.
I can't go because I'm taking my son to college.
Right, we, we are just clarifying for this other vote, the bro matter. We heard what you had mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So the meeting following that is September third.
Yeah, that's better.
Is that good for you?
Oh, wait a minute.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we follow up? I have a niece who's getting married in Virginia, and I have to drive my 90-year-old dad down there, so whether he needs two days' travel or what, I don't know. I can also try to access Zoom down there on a Thursday night. I should be able to do that. There are enough tech-savvy young kids there.
So let's see if we have, so the applicant can make it. I can make it. Laura?
Yep, I can.
Eric?
September 3rd.
Yeah. Donald, you figured it out?
I'm okay for September 3rd.
Okay, so we've got, we've got four, and probably John, so I think we're good for September 3rd. So would somebody make a motion, please, to schedule the public hearing for 11 Benedict Road on September 3rd? And this will be the first meeting right at 7:30.
I make a motion that we hold the meeting on September 3rd, the hearing.
I second it.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, so thank you, Madeline. I will follow up with instructions for the notices and so forth, and we've got plenty of time to get that done, so there's no rush, but I'll get that out to you in the next few days.
Okay, I'll make these revisions.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good luck on, or...
Good night, thank you.
So I think that's it for us tonight, so...
All right, I will get packages together for people to pick up, I guess, at the village office.
So they're going to be physical, Brett, you're going to, they're going to be physical packages rather than PDFs?
Well, I guess, what do you think? You know, the big manual, the initial thing that Paul Hen, that Sigur Henderson did, that bound copy, yeah, that thing. I think everybody has that, as I understand. So we're not going to try to recreate that, but the other stuff, I'm going to have that, I mean, what do you want? Shall we, should we make just giant PDF packet, or should we have the village just print out some packets and just give them out?
Well, if the village already has packets for all of us, maybe we just make sure that we go over and pick it up. But if that's not the case, then PDF. Eric, what do you think? Laura?
I wouldn't mind something that would reassure me that I had the latest information, because I know he revised it, he revised some of his measurements at one point.
Yeah. He, they did some changes. So I'm going to do a physical, I'm going to do it physically, and we'll do it physical, we'll have physical packets to pick up, and we'll see how that goes, and if there's issues with it, then we could change to PDFs. But I think physical, you know, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to go to the physical world right now.
Well, it's an important case, so I think, I think you're right, Donald, and I think we just confirm with you that we've picked up the copy, just so you know.
Right. And then, and then, you know, we can start our discussion on the 20th and, you know, and see where we go with it.
Last thing to mention, are these packets equally divided, or are some things lumped together, that people don't walk off with copies that other people named?
It'll be real simple, like Laura, you know, I'll have your individual names on each packet.
Okay, great. Thanks, Donald.
Yeah. All right.
Great, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, motion adjourned.
I move to adjourn.
I make a motion to...
Laura, you do it.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Donald and Aaron, for all your work.
Thanks, everybody. See you.
Thanks a lot. Take care.
Take care.
Aye.
So we don't have a meeting on September 3rd, then, at this point? Is that right?
No, we do. That's the Benedict.
I'm sorry, I mean the 20th.
That's Bro.
That's Bro.
You're voting on the 20th.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, so we got Bro on the 20th, and on the 3rd, we got Benedict.
Right.
Okay, so, got it. Great, thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Aaron.